I'd like to call to order the Cotterville Township special meeting and a public hearing for the adoption of proposed renewal of resolution for fire and police protection services and the repair and maintenance of township roads. Today is Wednesday, September 14th, 2022, and we are starting at 7:04 PM. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Can we have the roll call attendance, please? Tom?
Here.
Beth?
Here.
Mary Agnes?
Here.
Cheryl? Sherry? Here. Carl's absent. Excused, yes, he called. All right, the next item is gender approval, which we really don't need because we do not add or delete anything at this type of meeting. It's going to be a public hearing to start, and it's held today, September 14th, for the purpose of renewal of the special assessment for fire and police protection and repair and maintenance of township roads. It is a renewal. For fire and police protection is the same as four years ago, .8808 plus .1192 mils, which makes up a total of one mil. And for the fire roads, it's a half a mil. The special assessment would be for the winter tax bill of 2023 through 2027. The first year would raise approximately $228,441.75 for all three items. There are summary sheets of the past four years indicating both revenue raised and also what was spent and the accomplishments of the road work that completed for this purpose. That's in your folder. There is a copy of values that was out on the table there for proposed millage request over the next five years, if approved, for fire and police and repairs of our, maintenance of our township roads, and these values are furnished on the table in the lobby. And I think you probably have seen it already. Barb, you got one you can show me?
What?
Raise it up, yeah.
Yeah, this is for fire.
That's for, yeah, that's for...
And here's the, out of our audit book for the fire, and out of the audit book for roads and the police.
Okay. Barb is our assessor, Barbara Schutt, and she's gonna... Is it on? You might be talking to her, Barb.
Okay.
Okay, so if you want to, before we actually open the public hearing, do you want to give a rundown on some of these things that we want to make sure?
Sure, hopefully maybe it'll help answer some questions. Like Mary Agnes said, it is a renewal. We're doing this since 2019. It was, first year was on summer and winter, after that strictly on your winter bill. It is a renewal, so the fact that the special assessment is in place, you can just do the second public hearing instead of starting out with the first public hearing. Everyone was sent, based on the 2022 taxable value, and that 1.5 is a total millage, everybody was sent a notice for that. We've had two advertisements in the paper. We did receive four letters back that we weren't able to forward to anybody. We also had two letters of protest that came in. The, it is the same rate, like Mary Agnes said, it is on real property only, not personal property. If you want to protest this further to the tax tribunal, like your letter had said, you can do it 35 days, up to 35 days after this hearing, after the passing of the resolution to confirm it. We used to have forms that we would be able to give to you, but now everything's down on the computer, so you would have to actually go to the Michigan Tax Tribunal website and get the small claims petition for the special assessment. And, and once the resolution is adopted by the board, that confirms this rule, and that the board will be having in their packet to make that decision later. That's all I have.
Okay. Any board members have any questions? I'll open the public hearing for, at 7:08. All right, when you come in, we would ask you to approach the podium, please, and state your name and address and whatever you'd like to say.
Eugene Moore, 7414 Broadbridge, Cotterville Township. Can I get a copy of your ledger for what you've spent so far for road commission, or for the Rowan's Fire? And I just want to see where the balance is, because I thought when we first did this, this was only going to be a temporary thing for a few years.
Well, we're still fixing things, Gene.
So I just want to see how much, you know, because I know before we did it for the fire authority, how much we actually spent.
Yeah.
I just want to see where the numbers are.
Sure. I got an extra one of these.
Is that the fire?
That's the fire.
Okay, here's, oh, that's this thing, so you've got that one. Okay, here's the fire protection out of our auditing and the police and your one in roads.
On the roads, I explained where all the things that we spent it on.
No, these roads, I didn't give the top, sorry.
Yeah, you can have them. Anything else? Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
I'm Roseanne, I'm not given my last name nor my address. If this is a renewal, how come our taxes are going up from it? Shouldn't the millage be the same? Because my letter states my taxes are going up about $100 because of this.
Millage rate is the same. What is different is each year since 1994, when they passed Proposal A, taxable value has gone up the inflation rate, they used to call it Consumer Price Index or CPI, now it's called Inflation Rate Multiplier, state changes names. But whatever that is given to us in October by the state, that causes your taxable value to go up.
With these millages?
No, with your taxable value. Whatever your previous year taxable value is, times whatever the inflation rate multiplier is, will equal the following year's taxable value. That new taxable value times the same millage rate that we had the last four years is what is your value.
Okay, so us as taxpayers paying this money supposedly for fire and that, and roads, why is shortcut the way it is when half the time you can't even drive down that road because it's so potted, and they do a temporary fix, like every three months, throw some stone in there and, and that's it? That road gets so bad.
Let me help you with that one. That's one of, that's the project we're going to do next.
You're going to do it the right way?
Well, yeah, but we can only do a portion of it at a time, because it's a, it's, when we started out here, before I got this millage, I thought we could do that whole road, and we couldn't. The previous supervisor signed for it like three years in a row and never finished it. She never put the money aside for that, so there was nothing in the budget. So that's when I had come up with this idea to try and get a road millage so that we could do these extra things. Now I can do, let me see here, it's on the record for the next, this next meeting, right after this one. Okay, it's Request for Approval of Cotterville Township for an application for the local road system funding program for 2023, and it's to do the first, from Marsh Road down to, I think the address is 6039, if I remember correctly. And that's what we're going to do first, and then, and we're going to put in $100,000, we've got that set aside already, and then the county's going to give us $100,000. And then the next year, and I put it right on the application, you can see it in this paperwork, that another $100,000 will take it a little bit further, and then the last one will be less than, probably around $70,000, if, if stuff doesn't go up higher than it was. But that whole road will take us three years to do, but if this millage doesn't go through, if we don't use this millage again, then we have to withdraw that, because we don't have the money.
Who decides if that millage is going through or not?
This board.
So shouldn't that be something that us as taxpayers vote on?
You can vote on it, but we tried it, voting on it before, and it...
Right, it failed, which tells you that the taxpayers did not want to dish out any more money, and then I believe you guys took it in your own hands.
What are you going to do for fire protection if there's no money to pay the bill? That was what happened, the, the, when I came in, the money was gone, in the, down to $180,000. And at the time, we were paying $100,000 for fire protection to the Marine City Area Fire Authority. Now, there would have been enough to pay that one year, but then $80,000 was all that was left.
Correct me if I'm, I'm wrong, and I might be, isn't it now, though, that the fire department can send you a bill, me personally, that I have to pay that they came out to my house?
No, we're not doing it that way anymore. We were doing that before, and then everyone was in here complaining about, what do we pay taxes for? Except that there was no millage for taxes. This is the first millage that Cotterville Township's ever had.
So if, God forbid, if the fire department had to come to my house, then I'm not responsible to pay for that, then?
No, you are not.
All right, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Hello, Rebecca Dragmiller. I'm just curious, how do, how do you find out, like, what policemen and firemen, what, how much do they make? What do we pay them? What's their salaries? How do you?
You'd have to go to the Marine City Area Authority that we have in Marine City, it meets every two months. Let me see if I can tell you what wages are. Wages are, for 2021, they were $255,000 for wages.
Per person?
No, no, no. Good Lord, I need fire.
I'm sorry.
Firewoman.
Yeah, a firewoman, yes.
Okay, that's how much, how much everybody?
Right. And that's divided amongst four of us, four municipalities, Cotterville, the City of Marine City, half of China Township, and half of East China. So everybody gets a percentage. Now, in that paperwork again, that was on the table, what they do is they take the runs for the last three years, and they average it, and that's how they determine. Our budget for this year is $515,950. And the Marine, Marine City had an average of 49% of the calls, so they're paying $252,815. Cotterville is number two, we have 26% of the calls, and ours is going to be $134,147. Okay. East China pays 16%, and China has 9%. But see, they belong to another authority in St. Clair as well, and they pay the other half of their bill. Most of their land is in the district that's policed by the St. Clair Area Fire Authority.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Mrs. Dragmiller, I don't know what street you live on.
Yeah, what's her address?
Mrs. Dragmiller?
I'm sorry?
What is your address? I didn't...
558 Green Jay, Itzachin G'lov, Troop.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Good evening, my name is Chris. Address and stuff really doesn't matter.
Well, if you're, if you're coming to this meeting to complain, we have to have it for the record.
All right, 6615 Indian Trail.
What's your last name?
Kettle Hut, K-E-T-E-L-H-U-T.
Okay, K-E-G?
T.
T.
E-L-H-U-T.
Okay, sir.
And I don't know if it's a complaint or not, I'm trying to get educated here.
No, we're here to teach you.
All right, so you guys want more money from us?
No, we don't want more, we just want to renew what we already have.
Right. Go, go ahead, say something.
Can you step up to the podium, because we can't pick you up way over there, I'm sorry.
I live on it, I live at 7151 South River Road, and you've been settling this millage over the last four years. Our property values, taxable values have been going up, and so that millage, you're collecting more every year based on that millage, correct?
Right.
Well, it just leaves to me, in light of all of the stuff that we are facing today, that I would encourage all of you to really consider this, and maybe cut it back, and really prioritize where you spend that money. Because everybody here, I am sure, is getting clobbered right now, whether it's inflation, the price of gas, and everything else. So I think it's important to understand, with everybody here, that with that millage, you're paying more every year on it, and you will pay more over the next four years. Every, your taxes go up. The taxable value on your home goes up, that you will pay more via this millage. And I think you've got to think, I hope you will consider very carefully either cutting it back or stopping it altogether. The people in this community deserve a break. We're getting it way too hard.
Okay, well, the problem with that is the, the Marine City Fire Authority is a 25-year contract, so in order for us to withdraw out of there, we're going to have to pay off the truck that they just bought. And that would cost us another $100,000. So where are we going to get that money?
But why weren't we told that we were funding their investments?
Why weren't you not told? This has been going on for...
No, for them to go and buy a fire truck.
Look, because you can't only use a fire truck for 20 years. Then you have, you have to change it. You have to get different.
See, that's where, that's where it's very important going forward, to be transparent with the voters in this community, and what the real costs of it are. So what you're basically telling us is that we get out, get out of it.
We can't get out of it. It was somebody that wrote into this agreement way before any of us were here. It's a, it's an agreement that was, started in, I don't know, Tom, when was that?
Tom Ramon was in here at the Louvre.
Yeah, and he's been gone, what, 50? Yeah, something like that.
It's been in effect for a long time.
Well, essentially what it's done is it's settled, settled. The people of Marine City and Cotterville Township are with another debt. And I think as a leader, you need to look into this and bring that kind of agreement that is so short.
Okay, well, the next time it comes up, I'll, I'll mention it.
Do it anyways.
But like I say, we've got 25 years to pay for this.
I just, I just feel, right now, it's really, it's a double whammy. And I just object to being full tilt on that, because it does go up every year.
Well, that's because your property increases every year.
Everything goes up every, I didn't have to interrupt you, but everything goes up every year. I've got a trucking company, I was paying $2 a gallon, not that many years ago, now I'm paying over $5.
I know that.
The tires doubled, everything.
I know that, and that's where, I believe, where you possibly have some control over it, that elected officials ought to look real, real hard before they start laying more expenses on all the members of the community, especially this community. It is very hard.
We're doing, I think we're doing, being very, very frugal, and that's why Shortcut Road hasn't been fixed yet, because we've been trying to get this thing fixed for 10 years, at least. And the money, the culverts are going out, we're fixing road, crossroad culverts, everything, everything costs us more too, like everybody else.
I understand that, but I urge you to consider some other alternative, if there is one, as opposed to slamming us with more taxes.
Okay, well, I don't know that we can do that at this point in time, but just so you know that...
So basically, what you're telling me is you're just going to...
I'm going to vote for it, yes, sir, I am.
Yeah, no, excuse me, Tom, you brought up these culverts. I have a quarter mile of frontage, so I got hit with this three culverts that we got, pretty good. I have one car, never seen these culverts in eight years, since I moved there. Why did they charge each household the same amount of money, regardless of your road frontage? Why did I have to pay for a quarter mile road frontage when you have 100 foot, so you get assessed 100 foot and I get 500 foot? We both have the same amount of cars. Do you understand what I'm saying? It's not fair. That was not a fair assessment, and you brought up the culvert thing, not me.
No, no, I just said it.
Yeah, everybody should have been assessed like Richmond and some of the other townships that the same exact amount of money, then everybody paid a fair share, not because your piece of property is larger on the road. I've never seen these culverts, I don't drive that way. I, I don't even know where they're at.
Was it a road cleaning project they did?
No, it was the last one that we come up here for, last year sometime, but I know that's not what we're here for.
Well, we put in four, the first year, we put in, the first two years, we put in four on Marsh Road.
Right.
Because they were, they were going to, I said, what do I do if I can't afford this? Let me finish.
Okay.
I said, what are we going to do if I can't, if I can't pay for this? He says, we'll just shut the road down, all they'll allow is, is local traffic. Well, from Marine City Highway down to, to Chertier, they were going to shut that off. And the one road was so bad that we figured if a gravel tree went through, there was 50 ton on, and would happen, that culvert would happen to give away, it would roll over on a car in the next lane, and it might wipe out a whole family. So that's why we had to get going on this stuff.
I understand that.
We couldn't put up with that stuff.
I understand that.
Before them, we fixed it.
I understand that. I, I get it.
You don't drive that much?
It's broke, you got to fix it. But it doesn't mean I have to pay five times as much as you do, because I live on Indian Trail and I have a quarter mile of frontage. And I was assessed, because I have a quarter mile of frontage, I wasn't assessed $50, if every homeowner paid $50, the amount of money would have been the same. You would have assessed everybody the same amount of money, not based on your 50-foot lot, your 500-foot lot.
Mary Agnes, when was he assessed?
He wasn't assessed anything, I think he's talking about the money that we spent on the Marsh Road, because we didn't...
No, it was three culverts, if I remember, maybe four at the ball, so...
In, in front of Indian Trail, on Indian Trail?
No, 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 I don't know where they were in Cotterville Township.
Okay, well, I'll tell you where they are, they're on Marsh Road.
Yeah, I didn't care. Everybody should have been assessed the same amount, not on your...
Okay, well, that's not the way...
But that's not, Tom brought it up, I...
No, that's not the way we do it.
Yeah.
No.
Well, that's the way it should have been done, because that's fair. We're talking about being fair.
Well, sometimes things aren't fair.
Yes, right, I agree.
If you have a...
Same thing with this millage.
If you have a million dollar house on the river, you don't think that person should pay more taxes than you?
You know what, I have a half million dollar house, and I paid $250,000 because the lady was losing it. I put another $100,000 into it trying to get the stink out of it because of the animals she had living there. Doesn't mean I should be assessed, I was blessed and lucky to be able to afford $250,000.
Right.
Just because I have a quarter mile frontage doesn't mean I have the money to pay for that everybody else. I have one car, I don't even use half of these roads. I drive Indian Trail with 26, I don't go socializing, visiting, drive these roads, but whatever, I'm not here for that.
No, that's not what you're here for.
Right, but Tom brought it up, so that's why I got to that.
Well, I think Tom's still a little lost, he's not sure what you're trying to say, but, and I know the assessor is lost.
Well, if they want to be fair, everybody gets assessed.
Okay, well, that's, that's not how the special assessment works in this case.
Yeah, well, that's the way it should be, be fair.
Okay, well, it is...
All right. I'm 67 years old, I don't have the money maybe that he has or she has, I still go to work at 67. Let's be fair.
I'm 69, I'm still working every day.
Yeah, well, by choice, probably. Anyhow, this, this millage, this millage that, that's renewal, is, and I'm trying to get an education here, do we have a volunteer fire department here in Cotterville?
No.
There is no volunteer?
We belong to the Marine City Area Fire Authority.
Okay, so there is not a volunteer fire department?
There are probably firemen from the area that work on that.
They're volunteers?
Yes, some of them are.
Okay, and the police don't, is it St. Clair County, the Sheriff's Department cover this area?
Right.
Because I've never had a Marine City, I've never been broken into until I moved out in the country. And I've been broken into twice on, on Indian Trail, twice. Never seen a Marine City cop, lived in St. Clair Source for 30 years, never locked my door, never took my keys out of my car, nothing. I move out to the country where you think you're safe, been broken into twice. I offered a $10,000 cash reward, cash, no questions asked. I want to know who broke into my place, twice. My wife feels unsafe, my children, I didn't see a Marine City cop.
Okay, well, it's because...
I've seen a St. Clair County sheriff, so why would I want to pay for the Marine City Police? I'm asking...
You're not paying for the Marine City Police.
What am I paying for, St. Clair?
No, just the fire authority, that's just for the fire department.
That's just for her.
Oh, this is strictly fire, I'm sorry, my bad. I thought it was...
That's what the police do.
Well, we're trying to... I thought it said police and fire, my bad.
We...
And those are, I'm old, I can't see either, so, goodness to goodness. Oh, so it is for the police?
Yes, but we don't use Marine City, that's not our police department.
So who are we paying for the police department? We don't have...
That money is being set aside, because when they're going to open up Marine City Highway, the first thing that Marine City's going to want to do is annex our, what we put in to invest in that, to get the sewer and the water out there. One of these days, it's all got to be taken.
Why did you bring up water?
But it's supposed to be for the police, but not for doing the road.
Well, we're not spending anything on it, it's just staying in the coffers, we're trying to make arrangements to get a zoning administrator, somebody that can actually write tickets to do that sort of thing. We're in the process of doing that, that's what that money's put away for.
I'm sorry, Mary, why did you bring up water?
Why did I bring up what?
Water, sewer and water. I can't get, we can't get water, I replace my well pump every two years, costs me thousands to replace, on Indian Trail, my neighbors bring water tankers in.
Have you approached us for new line?
Yes, yes.
And nobody's helped?
Numerous times, for two years I tried. Tell me what it costs, please, please tell me what it costs.
I don't know, I don't remember talking to you about it.
People got to bring tanks of water in.
I know, I know.
All right, I replaced my well pump every two years.
I believe you, it's salty, I believe you.
Gosh, and it's at the corner of the street.
Yeah?
All right, two houses away, they have Comcast cable, you know what Comcast told me?
$30,000?
$12,000 will bring it to your home.
Most people tell me $30,000.
You listen to the government talk, and everybody, they give all these illegal immigrants phones, and everybody should have access...
Okay, you're getting off...
No, no, to the internet.
Getting off the tangent here, so...
They should have access to the internet.
If you, if you...
I can't get it, two houses away.
Three minutes is the time.
Yeah, you're, you're having a little...
All right, my point is, is that, you know...
You've made your point, sir, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, we shouldn't be paying, you know, you're telling me now that we don't use the police department.
We don't use the money, it's still there, it's not going anywhere.
Then why do I want to give you more money for not using it? I just asked...
It's for the future, you don't, do you want to get, you want to lose property to the City of Marine City?
I use the sheriff, I pay $5,000, $6,000 a year for the sheriff.
Ma'am, you've already had a chance already.
Oh, you're not allowed a second chance?
No, you're allowed three minutes, and I think you're about five, five minutes over.
So just a real quick question, I'm confused, you said that our millage is going up for the police, which you are correct, I never see Marine City out here, it's usually sheriffs, but now you're saying that money's going to be put aside for Marine City Highway?
No, that's not what I said.
Well, you said Marine City Highway.
Marine City Highway is going to have sewer and water here in the next 10 years.
Right.
Okay, and as soon as that goes in, Marine City will annex it, just like they took, took over the Kmart building, as soon as that was done, that was part of Cotterville. Okay, we lost that, they annexed it. What we're trying to do is be ready in case the next step happens, and we're trying to be ready. You have, you can't plan for, for things the next day.
I guess I'm confused, I guess I don't understand, so the police money that you're collecting off of me is going to go in a...
It's a fund.
Fund to do what with?
To keep ourself in, like, get a zoning administrator to do some ticket writing for blight and that sort of thing, that's what we're working on?
But that's not, that's not police.
Yes, it is, it's policing, it's enforcement.
Okay, all right. Excuse me, Roseanne, listen, Roseanne, after the meetings, I always, if anybody says anything, I write them a letter so they have the right to protest further, I just didn't have your address, do you...
I'm not going to give my address.
Okay.
She made me give mine.
All right, approach again.
Is that 6615? Okay.
All right, you're going to have to be quiet, this gentleman, we can't hear him.
It took half my time, I gave it to him.
Okay, well, let's...
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Mr. Lovett.
I heard you say something about annexation.
Yes.
What specifically, what areas are you talking about?
Anything that touches Marine City, they're, they want to get.
Well, can you be more specific?
Well...
All the way down to Broadridge Road?
Well, they're, they're on Marine City Highway right now at that end, so if they come down, they'll take from China and from us. If there's city sewer and water there, you know they're going to want it to expand their city, they don't have any place else to go. And what we want to do is protect that for our own citizens, because if it's going to be something that would be commercial or industrial, that's going to bring tax dollars to us, and it makes things easier for all the residences. Right now, we're trying to live on just residential stuff. I think we have five businesses in our township.
My point that I want to make is that if we're annexed into the city, then we pay city tax rates, correct?
I, I didn't understand what you said.
If they annex, say down to Broadridge Road, let's say, then the homes would all be taxed by the city, which is a much higher rate. be taxed by the city, which is a much higher rate than Conterville, correct?
Probably yes. City, city taxes are more money, yes.
Is that the position of this board? Do you wanna be annexed into?
No, we don't wanna be annexed. That's to stop them. That's, that's to stop them. And one of the things you have to have is a viable police department.
Say that while you're not-
I say, one of the things you can stop them with, if you become a charter township, and you can stop them from doing that from us. They can't, they can't annex into a charter township.
We're getting by ignorance. Are we a charter township?
No, we are not.
But we have to have a police force in order to be chartered?
Yes. We have to have access to the police department. At that point, we'd either have to hire IRA or, uh, I guess Clay takes care of IRA. Uh, the sheriff, Elgin Act is taken care of by the sheriff. Sheriff takes care of us, too.
I guess my real point is, is I have no desire to be annexed into the city of-
No, I don't either. I don't either.
Anyway, just to give clarification on that.
All right, very good, sir. Anyone else?
I just have one more question. I'm sorry, I don't need time to go through it.
Yes, you do. Cause people at home can't, can't hear you very well.
At home?
Yeah, this is on television.
What?
Yes, you're on television.
Okay, so, I don't understand at all. So, we're saving money to protect ourself from Marine City taking over territory?
And also to have an enforcement department in our building department.
So, how does that money that we're gonna put away prevent Marine City from taking property over?
We'll be able to, to make arrangements with the police department immediately without going through, uh, taking money out of the general fund to handle it.
To, the police department to handle what?
To handle the fact that we have to have police protection in order to keep them on their own side of the road.
I'm so confused.
Okay, I'm, okay, thank you. Am I not explaining this right?
You probably are.
When you go to the boundary commission, cause I work with one in Clay, when, when you're in front of the boundary commission, they wanna make sure that your unit of government can provide just as much or as best the same, um, quality of services as the people that are, are annexing you. So, if we would have our police and, and we have our fire and they all, we have, we have everything, the same thing that, um, Marine City has-
I did, yeah, I got you.
Then they cannot annex it.
Yeah, I got you.
But we can't do it at the last second. We have to have a prior, too. Plus, we would like, like Mary Agnes said, to get some type of a zoning person or somebody that can, you know, drive these roads, take a look at things, like you've been broken into twice, just the presence, presence of somebody there. But we need money in that coffers. We can't hire somebody without the money to at least pay them or get a talk.
I understand now about the whole-
Does that help a little bit?
Yes, it does. Thank you. Very good.
But I just ask one question.
Okay, but you gotta step up again, Mr. Lovett. I'm sorry.
Oh, come on, I'm trying, well, listen, I'm deaf, too. Why are you there and I'm deaf?
We have our police coverage of the city of, of Marine City, right?
I'm sorry?
We, we pay it to Marine City.
No, we do not. We pay to the sheriff. The St. Clair County sheriff.
Well, the fire department.
No, 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 these are different.
You know, they're confused with the authority.
Yeah, I know. They don't understand.
Marine City is entirely separate from the Marine City Fire Authority.
Our police protection comes from the county, from the sheriff's department.
But are we already paid for that through some of our data?
Yes, but we don't have a dedicated car. We would have to have a dedicated car. And like Barb says, we can't do that by next Monday if something were to happen. We have to be able to be prepared to do this. It's all in the works and everything takes time, you know that. I mean, look how long it took me to get fired. Four years before they would listen to me.
I know, we, we listen to it, however, I get it.
Okay, very good. All right, is it having to do with this village?
No, it has to do with the front project area of Conterville and-
Okay, well, if it has to do with the village, we'll listen to you, but you'll have to wait till the next meeting. We'll have one in a few minutes after we get done with this stuff, okay? Anyone else wanna speak on the village?
Can I just ask one question?
Sure. Can you stand up for the thing? Gene, thank you.
You're welcome. So, as I'm looking at the checks and balance sheets here, I notice on the year-to-date for three thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, why didn't the balance from previous years go over? I have a balance-
What are we looking at? Police, fire, roads?
That's okay. So, the revenue expenditure report for the Conterville Township, period ending three thirty-one.
I know, but what is the, what is the unit? What, is it police, fire, or road?
Oh, no, this is the roads.
Oh, roads, oh, okay.
We haven't got the money for it. It doesn't come in till December.
But there's a balance from the previous couple of years.
Not a balance. That's a, that's from the year before, yes.
Yeah, but why isn't that balance showing on the year-to-date? It should be accumulating from year to year.
It is accumulating.
But it's not on your balance sheet?
Are you talking about the front one or the top?
The one on the sheet here.
The last one, I think he's, oh, that one is the one right out of, out of the computer.
But every year, there should be a balance. The first year on this sheet, it's telling, you guys are telling me you had a balance of thirty-three thousand seven hundred and one. The next year, a balance of forty-three thousand two hundred and twenty-six. And then the next year, a balance of forty-eight thousand one hundred and ninety-eight. So, it should put us over one hundred and twenty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-five. And why isn't that on our balance sheet?
He's, he's adding-
Can you bring, can you bring your sheet up to us?
Mary Agnes, he's adding each one of these year-to-date-
Yeah.
Uh, for that time period, he's adding them together. Is that what you're doing?
Your year-to-date balance should always be that accumulated dollar on the balance.
Yeah, and she, I think she's gonna, when you did it, Mary Agnes, did you do like from nineteen to twenty?
I just picked up the, uh, this was what was highlighted by Lynn, our accountant. She said, "Pick up the one twenty-two and then the one twenty-four and then the thousand sixteen, seventeen sixty-five."
So, altogether, I guess why, I, let me, let me see if I'm saying this right. So, on the first page, it was from four one of nineteen to three one of thirty, of twenty. And it was thirty-three thousand that we had year's fund balance.
So, in the very beginning of the next year.
And then, and then for, um, the same time period only going to twenty, in twenty to twenty-one, it shows that it's forty-three. So, what he's saying, it should be carried over from-
Yeah, so the year-to-date balance should have been higher due to the revenue received by village.
But you're using the twenty twenty-two, right?
Yeah.
He's looking at each one.
Yeah.
And the years should have added up.
When, when you look at this, like, he, like-
Yeah, but I took these sheets right from, and I, and I had Lynn tell me what she wanted on each page, and that's what I did.
So, we have-
This is out of the computer. This is right out of her books.
Of what we have left. Because we have, what he, what I think it's, he's saying is, we had the village rate came in, we had sixty-four thousand came in that year.
Yeah, so we had a balance of thirty-three thousand seven hundred and one.
Yeah, and our total, and we spent thirty thousand of it on all these little items that were written down that we spent on culverts and what.
So, this year, we're in a balance.
So, this would have been our balance.
Yeah.
Now, okay, here's our thirty-three, next net of revenue and expenditure, so we have thirty-three thousand.
When I add up all the balances, we should have a balance of one hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and twenty-five dollars.
See, I don't know, I don't know these sheets. Well, I'm sorry.
Doesn't my kind of answer-
I see what you're saying, but I don't know what those sheets are, so, I don't know if I can find out the, there's a forty-three. I understand what he's saying, but I'm sorry, I can't tell you. I don't know. I don't work with these sheets.
Can our treasurer help us or no?
Can you see what, see what she did?
I can't.
I see what he's doing. He's got the, he's got the road, okay?
Okay.
And then this is what, they, it showed that it came in on taxes, this goes back to nineteen to twenty on, on property taxes, and it came in at sixty-four thousand. We spent thirty, and these are the things we spent them on, you know, that.
Yeah, that's, yeah, right from that.
So, that shows that we got this much left over.
And that's from that, right?
Yeah, this minus this equals what's that is. And that's what this sheet is, like I said, I don't know. This is out of Lynn's computer. This is, and this shows that we have that.
And does that equal the one you said?
Yeah, yeah, okay. But, and then for the next time, for the next period, you know, the next twenty to twenty-one, we got the sixty-six. We spent this, and we got this.
This is left.
Right, but see, we got forty. But what he's saying is, and this, I don't know, I, I don't have, don't deal with this. But it's, he's saying the thirty-three would have been what we left, had left over at the end of that tax time. At the end of this tax time, he's saying we had, it was just from nineteen twenty.
All I can tell you is that these were done as line items only. And no money can be used out of that fund for anything except fire, road, and so forth. And each, each, I agree, there should have been a cumulative, um, balance, but I don't know why our program doesn't do that. Do you understand that?
He's saying-
I don't deal with the computer, uh, programming, so that's why I don't know. Maybe, I thought maybe that one of the girls would know, but, um, that's why I went to Lynn. She was our accountant. And I said, "I need to show these people what we received in revenues and what we spent." And then I went through all the work orders from the county to show what they spent the money on and what, what the amount was. And then it balanced to what we had left in the account. And it is supposed to be an cumulative camp, uh, balance, but like I said, it's, um, you know, I did exactly as she said to do.
And I sit here and look at the number on paper, it's one hundred and twenty-five thousand, not short.
Well, we're not short anything.
Well, um, this is the point you guys have given me tonight.
Yeah, so, let me find out and I'll get with you tomorrow after, well, is Lynn coming
in tomorrow, you guys?
No.
No, she probably won't be until Monday or Tuesday. Can I get, can you hang on till I get there and then I'll call you?
Yeah.
And, um, I'll make a copy and I'll email it over to you.
And we're, we're putting this money in the fund. We wanna make sure the money's actually staying in the fund.
Yes, it's staying in the fund. You don't have to worry about that. Ever since I've been here, none of that shoveling that they were playing Russian roulette with before is being done. Every line item, anything that we get money for, it cannot be spent on anything else. We just don't allow it. And he's probably the tightest wad right over there. And, and Tom, anything with sewer and water, he always asks, "Do we have the money to take care of that?" And we're on top of all of that for just that reason. So, but I will get with you as soon as I get with Lynn. All right? And then I'll either give you a copy by email or I'll bring it to the planning commission meeting.
Okay.
All right? Fair enough?
Fair enough.
All right, everyone else understand what's gonna happen here? Any other questions, concerns? All right. Barb, you got anything else you wanna say? I think you covered all the points.
Yep, I'm just, one, one reason why we wanted the names and addresses is tomorrow I will, I'll be writing you guys all a letter and the, um, a link that you want to, you know, that you said something tonight, you have the right now to appeal further. So, um, send you that link, so, um, on a letterhead so you'll be able to protest if you still want to.
Rose, do you, do you understand what she just said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Because if, if you, we don't have a way to get ahold of you, you, we can't prove that you were here. And you have to prove that you were at this meeting. And I don't have your, your last name or your address.
I'd rather not give it.
Okay.
That's proof right there.
Well, yeah, but it's hard to put that in a file and send it to, to the tax tribunal, I'll tell you. All right, if there's nothing else, um, we're gonna close the meeting.
Yeah.
Is it have to do with this?
No.
Okay, well, you're gonna have to wait, Mr. Roberts. Okay? All right, we're gonna close the-
I don't wanna put my name.
Because everybody comes in to visit me. Seven forty-seven is the time that we're gonna close the meeting. Is there any board member comments? All right, hearing none, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion to approve or deny the copy of the special assessment described that appeared in the, uh, on the township website and copies are made available on the table of the lobby in the township hall for review. Do we have a motion to approve or deny? I would so move to approve, please.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by me and a second by Dev. All in favor, signify by roll call vote, please. Sherry?
Tom?
Yes.
Dev?
Yes.
Mary Agnes?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Tom, or Carl is excused. Okay, motion carried. All right, do you guys wanna adjourn for a few minutes or do you wanna go right into the next meeting that started, should have started twenty-five minutes ago? Paul, how do you wanna do it?
Whatever you wanna do.
All right. You wanna keep rolling? All right, we'll keep rolling then.
Yeah. Mary Agnes?
Yes.
I'm just gonna leave this stuff here. I'm gonna scoot.
You're gonna scoot? Okay.
My part's done.
All right, very good. Do you want me to put that back in your office again?
Just, I'll just-
You'll come in tomorrow? Okay, all right, very good. Thank you. All right, the next meeting is also September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two.
Did you pass the meeting for sure?
Yeah, I adjourned. Didn't we adjourn it?
No.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn, please.
I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn at seven forty-nine and second it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Ayes, hearing none, motion carried. All right, let's begin the next one. Okay, seven forty-nine, we're starting this one. All right, Dev, do you wanna do this pledge of allegiance? We have some people that weren't here for the first part, so please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for what you stand as, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Roll call, please. Sherry?
Dev?
Here.
Mary Agnes?
Here.
Tom?
Here.
Sherry?
Here.
Carl's absent.
Okay. All right, we need agenda approval and I have a couple of items that we're gonna have to work on first. First one is, um, a request for payment to be added under new business, um, item number eight. For dilute construction at invoice number three nine nine nine, it's for twenty-two hundred and fifty dollars for an emergency water main for an emergency water main break repair. Number nine, in new business, we're asking that you approve the resolution number twenty twenty-two dash twenty-eight. That's for the adoption of the St. Clair County Hazard Mitigation Plan that they prepared. And number ten is a request for approval of the debt retirement bond payment regarding Water Districts Three and Four, which is due November first, two thousand twenty-two. It is an interest-only payment in the amount of seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. And we need to approve that payment as well. So I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented, plus these three items under additions. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I second.
All right, we have a motion by Sherry and a second by Dev to approve the agenda with the three items. All in favor, signify by saying aye, please. Aye?
Aye.
Nays? Hearing none, motion carried. All right, the agenda approval, consent agenda is the first item. We've got regular minutes from August tenth, we have a special meeting from August twenty-second. There's also a sealed set of minutes. Approval of the treasurer's report, reconciliation for tax, the tax account, general checking as of July thirty-first, both of those. Cash summary report by General Fund for July thirty-first, and the Cotterville Township Investments Report dated as of July thirty-first. Also, the approval of the clerk's report, revenue expenditure report for August first through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. There's also approval of paychecks, payroll dates from August first through August thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Gross total in the amount of thirty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and six cents. Paycheck numbers thirty-one ninety-five through three hundred, three thousand, two twenty-seven. There's also approval of accounts payable in the opens from August first to August thirty-first, eleven thousand, six hundred thirteen dollars and sixty-two cents. There's also already paid fifty-two checks. Check numbers twenty-one, three, three, four through two, three, one ninety-seven, in the amount of two hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-two dollars and ninety-six cents. There's also two tax payments, I believe, is that what they were? Disbursements in the amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight forty-nine point twenty cents. So there was a grand total of the payables and the already paids, fifty-four dispersments in the amount of four hundred, ninety-nine thousand, three hundred and two dollars and sixteen cents. There's also correspondence in the way of the Marine City Fire Authority Department runs for the report for August, and Ira Township Fire runs for August as well. Now, before we make a motion on that, we have a set of minutes. Okay, we're gonna pass this down, quickly look at them, and then hand them to the next person. It's the meeting of the minutes that was a closed session. There's only one set of minutes, and we have to hang on to those for a year and a day, and then they can be destroyed. Okay, we have a motion, we need to have a motion to approve the consent agenda, listing all of those items previously done, including that set of minutes that's sealed in the envelope.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a second by Dev.
Tom?
Yes.
Mary Agnes?
Yes.
Dev?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Carl's absent.
Motion carried, thank you very much. The next item is open session. Anyone that has anything to do with anything on the agenda, may approach the podium, please, and state your name and address for the record. That's seven fifty-five, and no one's showed the record that, no one approached the podium. Okay, the next business is new business. The results of the sealed bid opening for an electronic sign for the township hall front yard. The sign sizes were twenty-nine by eighty-seven, eight, and twenty-seven, forty-one by eighty-seven wide. We had two sealed bids for the signs. The first one was, bidder number one was Hardy and Sons. A was thirty-eight thousand, one sixty-two point seventy-nine, and B was forty-five thousand, one sixty-two seventy-nine. Bidder number two is Philip's Sign and Lighting. Bid was stamped and received by the clerk at nine forty, and that one is, A sign is thirty-six thousand, four sixty-three point four-two, and B was forty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirteen dollars and ninety-six cents. The low bidder was, on both signs, sizes, was Philip's Sign. We need a motion to approve that. Just so you know, this money that we're spending is stuff that comes from the federal government. If we don't use it, we lose it.
It's grant money, it doesn't come, pardon me?
Then lose it.
You'd rather it go back to?
Yep.
You can't use it for other areas?
All you can use it for is things that affect the whole township.
How about the park?
That, we could do it in the park, but.
Isn't that what parks and rocks money's for?
Yeah, it's not a line item that you really need to spend on. I mean, we've got.
You don't leave a sign.
Okay, um, this, this part of the meeting is not usually open for everybody. I was just being courteous, so. Do we have a motion to approve or deny, or what do you want to do? My opinion is the smaller sign would probably be plenty big. Yeah. The twenty-nine high by fifty-seven.
We get X amount of dollars.
I'm sorry?
We get X amount of dollars from this grant for federal money?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's, we got three hundred and sixty-some thousand that's coming in, three sixty-one, I think it is.
It's a lot of money for a sign, but.
Yeah.
It is.
You can't use it on that.
Can we have a meeting?
I'm sorry?
Why do we need a big, expensive sign?
Well, because we have people that tell us that when we post things on the window, that they can't see it without getting out of their car, and we get more complaints about that sort of thing.
Don't make their problem our problem.
Okay, well, everyone.
But the money in the park.
We can't really use it in the park unless we got a dedicated thing.
What other uses can we get?
Anything that affects everybody.
Can we use it for the water boil stuff?
For the what?
There was a water boil on Sunday, and I didn't find out until I went to Winter Circle that there was a water boil, in fact, it wasn't on our website, it wasn't on anything. I drank a liter of water before I went there.
Emergency preparedness took care of that. Sir, can you, can we kinda keep, this isn't supposed to be back and forth in here, okay? We gave you guys all a chance to talk, so. I'm sorry about that, but I know that emergency preparedness, uh, put it on the, on the, whatever they do, all the television stations, radio stations, whatever they have, so.
Not online, where they don't have TV, and it wasn't, um, the, or, sorry, I'll talk later. Continue.
Thank you.
Could that money be spent more intelligently? What are our other options? Did you list any of that for?
No, what, what, we can't do things like, you know how the, the, out in the country, people need, uh, what, need, need to have internet service? We can't, because part of the township's already covered. So if I spend money out there, then the people along the river are gonna be upset.
Instead of a forty thousand dollar sign, where might the money be more wisely spent?
Okay, well, I, we've been sitting around for like six months figuring out where this goes. We got the first half, when did we get that, December? January? January, maybe, this year? Yeah, I mean, we've, we've been talking about things, and we have to get it approved. Every time we come up with something, this was one of the things that could be spent on.
Forty thousand dollars?
Well, it's thirty-six thousand, but, you know, I don't.
I think that's absurd, for duty, I think it's.
Okay, well, like I say, we're not taking a vote on that. We're taking a vote on whether we want to spend it at all. If you don't want to spend it, we'll just, whatever we don't spend, we have to send back, so.
How much? Excuse me?
Excuse me, sir.
How much time do we have to come up with places to spend this money at?
We have two years.
We got two years?
Start with this.
They've been talking about it, I haven't been involved too much, but they've been talking about it. And there's things that you can spend on, things you can't. We've done some things, I'm quite sure, I can't remember what they were, but I'm not a big fan of the big sign for forty thousand dollars, but.
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six. Thank you.
You want to table it, or you want to just forget it?
I think the consensus is not to get it.
Well, let's table it for a month and a year.
Okay, well, this price is only gonna be good till, till tomorrow, so. This is, everything's going up, so. So are you motioning to table this for a month?
That would be my motion.
All right, do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, Dev's second. All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
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 Nays? Hearing none, motion carried. The next item is results of the bid for asphalt sealing of certain township properties. The township parking lot, the basketball court, the township bike path, um, strand paving from Kimball Township's. The bid was seven thousand, five hundred and forty dollars. Aztec asphalt from Marlette, Michigan's bid was ten thousand, four hundred dollars. The low bid was obviously strand paving. Is that, is that hot mix that they're using?
I can call him right now, he told me he'd probably get a call from me during the meeting.
Okay, um, if it's the stuff in the bucket, I don't, I'm not in favor of that.
They're doing, I asked what jobs they got in the area, they're doing the Catholic church in Algonack and Harson's Island.
I don't know.
Is this federal money also?
This? No. This is our money. It's to maintain things that we have. You have to seal the parking lot every other year. You have to fill in all the cracks.
Hang on just a second, Justin.
Hold on.
I got you on speakerphone, what was your question, Mary Agnes?
I wanted to know what kind of sealant are you using? Is it hot mix, or is it something you took out, take out of buckets?
Uh, what we use is called Coltar Sealer, and we get it distributed to us in bulk. We have a six thousand gallon holding tank. We, uh, we're spraying it out of a thousand gallon tank that's attached to our truck.
And it's hot?
Uh, yes, it's hot.
That's what I wanted to make sure, all right.
All right, thanks, Justin.
No problem, if you guys have any questions, feel free to call me.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we need a motion to approve, do you want to spend seventy-five hundred and forty dollars for the low bid?
I'll make a motion to approve the bid.
Okay.
I got a quick question, I won't even go. Uh, when was the last time we had this done?
It's been, well, we didn't do it through twenty with COVID, because we couldn't get it. The last time we, we had the low bid was the other contractor, and then you didn't want to, it was when Churchill was still here. He didn't, you guys didn't think that because the leaves were coming down, that we'd have leaves all over the parking lot?
The only reason I'm saying that is he said it's, his process is good for at least three to four years. They recommend every two, but.
Yeah, that's what they recommend.
Okay, just as, I just want to make sure we got apples for apples, that's all.
We don't have to do it every, every other year if you don't want to. It's just that when those cracks open up, that year, we, we seen how, how far that opened up, this corner from our, a building over to this, the garage. It opened up that far, and it got full of water, and then it froze and broke, and.
Can we use the federal money for that, because that?
No.
That affects everybody?
That's maintenance.
Yeah, we gotta take care of our own stuff, so. All right, um, we had a motion, and we, did we have a second? I'm sorry, I didn't know. No, do we have a second for the, the seventy-five hundred and forty dollar bid?
I second.
Okay, um, he also said that, um, he wasn't, he wasn't sure he could get it done this year.
He assured me he will get it done this year.
He did?
Yes.
Okay, because that's not what his bid said, but, all right, as long as you're.
His person assured me that he'll be doing it in between St. Catherine's.
Well, he says in this, I may be able to squeeze you in doing those jobs.
Yeah, he assured me, he'll get it done this year.
Okay, all right. So all in favor, signify by saying aye, by roll call vote, please.
Mary Agnes?
Yes.
Dev?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Motion carried. The next item is requests for approval of the debt retirement bond payment regarding the St. Clair County Supply System number, uh, twelve, series two thousand eight, which is due October first. It's an interest payment in the amount of ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. The agent fee is seventy-five dollars, and it's also known as Water District Two-A. The check will be made payable to the St. Clair County Department of Public Works in the amount of ten thousand, nine fifty, and must be delivered to the county prior to September nineteenth to make our financial obligation. I need a motion to approve the payment of ten thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars to St. Clair County for the Water District Two, uh, bond payment.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second.
We have a motion and a second to spend that. All in favor, signify by saying aye, by roll call vote, please.
Tom?
Yes.
Mary Agnes?
Yes.
Dev?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you very much. The next item is a motion to approve or deny the renewal of the special assessment of, for fire and police protection and repairs and maintenance to our township roads, beginning with the winter tax bill for two thousand twenty-three through two thousand twenty-seven.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
I'll second. All in favor, signify by saying aye, by roll call vote, please. Dev?
Yes.
Mary Agnes?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you very much. Next item is requests for approval of the Cotterville Township application for the local road system funding, assisting, uh, for two thousand twenty-three for a hundred thousand dollar match money from the St. Clair County Road Commission. That is that, uh, money that I was telling you about? Let me see here.
That's part of the gravel hole. Is that part of the gravel hole?
No, no.
No?
No, this is just taking care of, uh, of Shortcut Road. For the first, uh, let me see how, I think it, I think the address is six thousand, thirty-nine. Oh, is that the right one? It's our local road money that we always hear it as. F-five is what it is. Okay, Cotterville Township would like to see the shortcut road beginning at the east end, at Marsh, milled off. Salvage the millings and pile them in this township park on Shortcut Road in the parking lot for us to use on our walking paths. Prepare the base of stone, place two and a half inches of asphalt base, then an inch and a half of wearing course of asphalt. We are requesting a match of one hundred thousand dollars for the first thirty-one hundred lineal feet, which brings us to about the address six zero three nine Shortcut Road. If possible, please include cleaning the ditches and replacement of culverts where necessary for this coming two thousand twenty-three season, and next year, another hundred thousand match, and the third year, the balance of the road to Starville. That's what I'm requesting. And the money comes out of our road millage fund. We need a motion to approve that local road system for two thousand twenty-three. I will so move.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by me and a second by the clerk. All in favor, signify by saying aye, by roll call vote, please.
That money's coming out of the thing we just renewed.
I'm sorry?
Money comes out of the, what we just renewed.
Yes, yes, if that didn't get renewed, then we couldn't do this, no. Tom?
Yes.
Dev?
Yes.
Mary Agnes?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Motion carried, thank you very much. We have a request by the deputy clerk, Michelle Apt, for approval of township, uh, policies and procedures regarding, and it's a misprint, it says dishonest, it should be dishonored payments. Yeah, treasurer's office. This is known as the Township Policy and Procedure Number Twenty, twenty-two dash zero one. Has everybody read it? Do we need it?
I have a question about it.
Okay.
It, in, under, ooh, under number one, it refers to ACH payments with a balance on utility billing invoice. What about the payments that go to taxes, building department? Because there's, you know, checks received in other areas. And I just wondered if like number two could be any tax, utility, or any payment made to any account that is paid with a check includes the payments made towards tax, utility, building permits? Because I don't know if it's strictly for water, though?
No, this is, it says for balance due on utility billing, and.
But it talks about any account that is paid, but I thought like tax and that should be mentioned.
Okay, well, the problem was, the way it was explained to me, maybe your, your deputy wrote this up, but she, what she explained to me was that people were paying on the last day.
Right.
Before it rolled to taxes, and, and they wrote a check and the check bounced. Okay, well, now we gotta do a whole lot of backing everything out, and then, um, and another, another thing they do is they write a bad check to begin with, to, so they don't have to pay the penalty. Well, we've got more invested in time trying to figure that out.
Well, we do have that in, in taxes and the building department permits, too.
Yes, yes.
So that's why I say I thought there should be some designation of the other.
We can change it if you want.
Just to add some more information to it.
We'll, we'll have Michelle write down what you want, and we'll give it to Michelle tomorrow or, or next week, and she can do this. And if you want us to table this for right now.
And it is a lot of work, lots of check balances that goes back and gets up back and.
And if they've received two dishonored checks two times, then they're required to pay in cash, money order, or certified check. Because trying to chase them for the money is not a good idea either.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of bookwork of them to do everything, I think.
All right, well, if that's all right with you, then we'll. All right, well, if that's all right with you, then we'll table this till next month and then add your ideas and to, and get it approved by Michelle. She figured this out, so. All right, we have a motion to, to table. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we're going to vote on that. All in favor signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Nays, hearing none, motion carried. All right, let's go to the next item here. A request by Deputy Treasurer Nicole Hart wants either the cleaning of or the replacement of the carpeting in the township hall, as well as request to purchase two dehumidifiers for and purchase of a damp rid for the mustiness in the basement of the hall. This building was, this addition was built in 2005. It's not had, God, last time I paid to have the carpet done and we, we had just had a Halloween party in here and I think it was full of mud from the kids doing something outside or maybe, no, it was an Easter egg hunt, that's what it was. And then we had it cleaned. So that was quite a few years ago. We haven't had anything for parts and wrecked now in about three years, so. It's, there, she just makes a, you know, an idea, so I have, she only gave it to me Wednesday afternoon and I didn't have time to do any running around trying to find pricing or anything. If, if you think the carpet is that bad that we can't get away with just cleaning it?
Well, it was dirty, that's for sure.
Well, we'll get it cleaned.
The air was bad.
Well, until we get it washed, I suppose.
Getting it cleaned.
Yeah, all right, that's what I would be in favor of too. Tom, what do you think?
That's what I would mean.
And then I'm for the humidifier and that stuff because that basement was terrible when we didn't get it cleaned.
Two humidifiers.
Yeah.
All right.
Do we have an alarm on that?
Not yet.
Now?
Nope. I don't think he's finished the rest of the, has he put all the insulation back in the bond of the house, bond of the building?
I'm not sure.
I don't know, I haven't been down there.
Who's working on that? Who's doing the work on that?
Jack McEwen.
Oh, okay.
All right, I'll check on that too.
Has he, would he be the one putting in an alarm for that or?
No, I got to get a plumber. Unless I can get Nick to do it for me.
Is that going to be like one that'll go over a cellphone or?
Yeah. It probably should go to a couple cellphones.
Otherwise, we're going to be right back in the mess we were with all the.
Yeah, okay. All right, so what do we want to do? We just want to clean the carpet right now and then get pricing on two dehumidifiers?
You can see what it looks like when it's cleaned and if it's bad when it gets dirty, again, getting the carpeting.
Okay, fair enough.
Give it a chance and see what it looks like.
Yeah, all right. Do you want to make that in the form of a motion?
I make a motion with the carpeting that we get it cleaned at this point.
Okay. I'll support. All in favor signify by saying aye, please. We're still spending money. I don't have a price yet, so.
Is that someone get a couple prices on or?
If you'd like, yep. I don't even know if the guy that did it the last time is in business anymore, so. All right.
Cleaning or assessment, what do you think of that?
If you've got somebody that you've used before that's tried and true, give me their names and I'll contact them and give them all a chance to.
If you want to wait until after November, the election, when a bunch of people are going to be tramping all kinds of stuff in.
Good idea, oh yeah, good idea.
And then be prudent about our money.
Okay.
Okay, we'll let you break into the meeting for that.
All right, Tom?
Yes.
Bev?
Yes.
Mary Agnes?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right. Uh, public comments. Mr. Roberts, now you get a turn. Oh, I'm sorry, hang on, one more minute. Stay put, honey.
Where, where we're going? Use the name.
Stay right there, honey.
Oh.
Don't help me. All right, under new business, number eight, we have a request for payment to dilute construction invoice number 3999 dated August 4th in the amount of $2,250 for an emergency call out on August 3rd, 2022 for a water main break repair that was on McKinley and Markle Road near 6506 Markle Road. Uh, I would like to make a motion to pay Mr. Dilute his $2,250. Do we have a second?
Yep.
All right, all in favor signify by saying aye by roll call vote, please.
Bev?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Mary Agnes?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Motion carried. The next item is a, the approval of resolution number 2022 for the adoption of the Sinclair County Hazard Mitigation Plan. They disvoted on that through emergency preparedness, um, August 18th. They sent me a, a format for it. I prepared it with the things that go in it and I have attached it in your pile. Here's someplace, there.
Did we skip over public comments?
I'm sorry?
We're here right now.
Just about there.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Thought I had it off.
All right, um, what this is, is something that they renew every five years. It's, it's been taken care of since July 15th of 2015. It's just agreeing that we were going to follow the same plan that the Sinclair County Emergency Preparedness wants to have. There's a link, I'm going to have, I just got it like day before yesterday. I've got a link on it and I think I sent it to you guys. It's 221 pages and I didn't want to print it and hand it to you, so I figured if you want to look at it, you can go on, but I think it should go on the website so that if the public wants to read it, they can read it as well. But this is a motion to, to sign the application on behalf of Cotterville Township to the county. And I have to sign it. Do we have a motion? I can't make the motion.
I so moved. I'll second.
Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Nays, hearing none, motion carried. All right, the last item is, this one just came in this morning, request for approval of the debt retirement bond payment for the other water line, series number 2009. It's due November 1st and it's an interest only payment also in the amount of $17,781.25. And it should be made payable to the Sinclair County Department of Public Works prior to October 14th. And because it was so close to our meeting next month, I didn't want it to be late. Be late. Sherry gets really nervous when things are on her desk, so I'm trying to keep her happy. So I would so move to pay that bill in the amount.
I make a motion to pay this.
Oh, you're going to do it? Okay.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor signify by saying aye by roll call vote, please.
Tom?
Yes.
Mary Agnes?
Yes.
Bev?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Motion carried. Now, I think we're ready for public comments. Is there, is there any way you can get up there because people, people at home can't hear you? Okay? Tell me, move some chairs for you? Tom, can you give him a hand with that? Are you guys dancing or what? Everybody in Roberts Landing wants to hear you. Thank you, gentlemen.
As I was saying.
Give us your name and address, please, for the record.
Yeah, Fred Roberts, 8646 River Road, Roberts Landing. Uh, I'm referring to two articles, front, front page articles in the Times Herald concerning this receipt evidently, uh, two and within a week, front page about Cotterville. Uh, questions linger on unpaid receipt. Cotterville, Cotterville Township Board decided to send the issue to the Michigan Department of Treasury and the people are pretty worked up at this time. I wasn't here when this was discussed. Residents of Cotterville, however, are not done with it. They still want to know why the receipt was signed, et cetera, et cetera. What has been done with this?
It's already had two meetings and it's been tabled for a little while until we get some, uh, some kind of results from the auditor, the township auditor.
It says the state police?
No, state police isn't going to be called unless they, unless the auditor says we should.
So something's being done?
Yes, it's being worked on.
Okay. And I have a comment that we decided on this October 1st for a decision on the motor mess down here at the corner. October 1st, October 1st.
From Motor City, auto repair.
Oh, Green City.
Motor City Auto Repair.
Green City, oh, okay, yes. We have, that's how long we have to wait because that's what we gave him at the planning commission a year ago.
Okay.
He had till October 1st.
So at that time, he has to show us some?
He has to show us something probably, yes, by then. But what I'd like to do, we're making some other arrangements, so.
I know that's what you said, that's good stuff, okay. So we're going to be doing something on that?
Yes, sir.
But, and I say again, two, two front page, uh, hey, front page articles in the local paper. With Cotterville Township, you know, we just got to settle those things before you start getting your, unnecessary, unnecessary publicity, like what the heck are you doing up there and so on?
All right, very good. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You guys want to give him a hand back to his chair? Yeah, but he might roll away on that.
Yeah, hold on to it.
He can't, he can't keep that steady to sit down and then. No making dizzy. All right, is there anyone else in public comments that would like, would you please approach the podium and give us your name and address, please?
Frank Lorkowski, 8407 River Road. Um, this was a special meeting with the agenda at 7:00 that was tabled, right?
What was tabled?
The, about the adoption of the renewal for police, fire, protection of road maintenance.
No, we talked till 10 minutes to 8. Didn't, you were here by then, weren't you?
Yes, we were, but I mean, I thought that was tabled.
No, that wasn't.
No, it wasn't.
But you voted through on, on item four?
Yep.
So originally, we voted to table it.
No, we didn't do that.
Can you read back into your notes for that meeting?
Um, yeah, the original one was.
Said, oh, yes. You, you motioned, Bev seconded?
That, was that on item four?
To approve. That was during the regular meeting?
During the regular.
During the regular meeting, you voted yes. During the special meeting, it was voted tabled. That's why I put a question.
No, I circled, I circled approved. Is that it, sir?
It is.
Thank you.
Item number two?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Um, the people that burn down their houses in my neighborhood are still getting loads of wood delivered and I would appreciate it and I'm tired of having to come up here and ask. They don't have a license to sell firewood on Roberts Road in M29. We all know who we're talking about. Why did he just get a load of wood delivered?
I have no idea, I did not.
Then, how can we, two months now, I've been coming in here and asking to shut them down? Shut them down or don't shut them down. Let me know if you're not going to shut them down and that way when he burns my house down, I know where to go. That's all I'm asking.
All right, thank you.
Not unreasonable, I thought.
All right, anyone else? Just ma'am.
I will give my name. Mrs. Doran. I just had issues with Zorn the last time I gave my name and stuff, they, it was bad.
You did what?
I had issues with him when I gave my name and that at one of the meetings, he like threw stuff in my yard and they would drive by and call me names and stuff.
What's your address, Mrs. Doran?
Um, 7395 Marsh Road.
Seventy, 73?
95.
95 Marsh, okay.
So my question is, um, I pay taxes for the park and recreation, correct? The fund?
Well, it's, it's county tax, yes.
It's county tax.
And then they send out back.
What's that, I'm sorry?
Then they send some of it back.
Okay. So what, what is happening with that money?
It's just accumulating.
And what are we doing with it?
It's just accumulating right now. We haven't been able to do anything with COVID and I haven't gotten back to.
You haven't been able to fix the park because of COVID?
Well, all we do is cut the grass. We have parties there, we have to clean up the.
Well, but if, if our, if, it's sad. I took my grandkids there and I, and I don't know if I'll take them back. This has been a couple of years now and my grandbabies love it. They can't play in the sandbox. The weeds are this high. The cranes have been broke for two years. And I definitely will not bring them back until it's taken care of or until spring again because in the beginning it's fine, but I just brought them there last week and the whole playground, the weeds are like this. And you got them round little piggy ball things. We were covered. My three-year-old had it in his shorts. I had to pull them out of there. They were sticking in my finger, my, my, all of us, our pants, our shoes, we were covered with them. And, and that's no way to have the kids play and they love it. They love the playset and stuff. Why is it not being taken care of?
I don't know, probably because I just don't have enough hours in the day. And it's a volunteer thing and.
Don't you hire a lawn guy?
We have, yeah, he cuts the grass.
Why doesn't he weed whack?
He does weed whack.
Well, why isn't he weed whacking underneath the?
I don't know why he didn't. I didn't have, no one's told me he has. I know, I know what he weed back, whacked the other day because he told me there was a bee's nest and we had to call someone in and get rid of the bees.
Wow, I don't know.
He found a nest, so we must have.
I had the kids down there a couple of days ago, underneath the whole playground, underneath the whole.
That's, that's where the, the bark's at, right, Roseanne?
What's that?
Is that where the bark is, not the grass?
It's the park itself, right, the playground.
Mulch parked, parked in the playground.
You can't even see the cedar chips anymore.
He must have found it because he ducked, when he hit the, the weed whack around the train set is where he found the bee, yeah.
Well, then he must, maybe he weed whack. I'll, I'll look tomorrow because.